I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting of the Richland County Recreation Commission, our regular board meeting, to order. All right, so the first thing that I'll call for is adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Lepine?
Yes.
Lindsey? Ms. Lindsey?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Coach B? Motion approved.
All right. All right, so the next would be to adopt the board approves the minutes from the November 16th, 2020, regular meeting. And we had a meeting, a special call meeting on November 23rd, 2020.
I move that we adopt the minutes from the November 16th regular board meeting and the November 23rd special call meeting.
Second.
Roll call. Lepine?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. Tonight, we do have one person signed up for public input. So, is that Mr. Dean?
Uh, no, that's Charisse Lopez. I'm not sure Jamie has her on radar yet.
Yes, Ms. Lopez is online, and I will open her up and unmute her to speak if you're ready. You'll have two minutes to speak, Ms. Lopez, so start when you're ready.
Okay, hello, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to participate in your meeting. I'm from Teague Road, and I had a question about Kaufman Park. I wanted to know specifically about the children's playground. Are there any plans to upgrade it? Currently, there's just a playset there. We don't have any swings or anything to engage the children in, to play with, other than that slide. I've been in the area for over 10 years now, and there hasn't been much done with that park.
I appreciate your comments. I would ask Lakita just quickly, maybe to look into that, so that at the next meeting, we can respond.
Yes, sir. We do have a replacement list for our playground, so I need to confer with our park maintenance team and see if Kaufman Road is on that list, and then we'll also do an assessment of the facility and report back to the board, so that we can respond to Ms. Lopez's.
So, Ms. Lopez, I think, by the way, you signed up. We should have your email, so.
Yeah.
If not, we need to maybe get it from you offline, so we can contact you back to kind of give you an update, and if you're not satisfied, please come back to our next meeting next month.
Yes, I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for participating.
You're welcome.
All right. Oh, Mr. Dean, looks like you're up next, and we're out of the public input. Look forward to hearing about next level sports, and I believe that commissioners, that we all have a, in our packet, that we have a little fold-out related to that. So, it's your floor, Mr. Dean.
Well, I want to begin by thanking you for allowing us to have this opportunity, and I'm gonna be very brief. My name is Russell Dean. I am the president and CEO of SC Kings Foundation. Locally, I am a licensed private investigator. I've been in the community since 1999 with Dean Investigation Agency. However, I've been coaching AAU basketball since 2004. And with the help of Alson Hewitt, I've formed this foundation, because I've had a dream for so long of opening a multi-court facility here in the Columbia area. Having traveled throughout the United States, visiting other-like gyms, I knew that this would be something that would flourish here in the Columbia area. We've gotten excellent feedback, and with the help of SFA, we've been able to put together a packet that you have in front of you. And that's all for me. I'm probably smarter than the other people that are on the call with me, so I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Who is with you?
Allison Hewitt of Allison Hewitt and Associates and SFA. We have Barry Smallshaw and Daniel Morton, who is joining us tonight.
All right, I'll let you kind of run it from your side of it.
All right.
Allison, anything from you, or do you want me to dive into the presentation? All right, sounds good. Well, I'm gonna share my screen if I can. I know that you all have the presentation in front of you, but I'm gonna. Let me see if I can. Okay, there we go, should be up. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for taking the time here and allowing us to present for you. As Russell mentioned, my name is David Morton. I am Director of Research Analysis and Development Advisor for the Sports Facilities Advisory, or SFA. I'll tell you more about who we are, but we've been working with Russell and Allison for much of 2020 on analyzing and understanding the opportunity for the incredible vision that Russell and the foundation have had for IRMO, and really conducting feasibility and putting numbers to that vision. And so, I'm gonna spend about 15 minutes here talking through and giving an overview of the project, and we'll have plenty of time for questions and look forward to it at the end. So, it turns out, I'll give you some background on who we are and what we do. I mentioned SFA or Sports Facilities Advisory. There's really three entities that are all sister companies. We work under the same umbrella, but we've got SFA, Sports Facilities Advisory, SFD, or Sports Facilities Development, and SFM, or Sports Facilities Management. What we do is we help in the planning and funding of youth and amateur sports, entertainment, recreation facilities. We help at SSD through the development of those facilities and venue planning and procurement of equipment, and then at SFM, we also manage facilities. And so, we were founded in 2003. Since then, we've served over 2,000 communities. We'll see what should be 30 million visits at our venues next year. And so, a couple of different things that I'll just highlight is, we are the only partner for ICMA, or International City County Association, for recreation. So, we are advising communities across the country on decision-making in terms of sports, recreation, wellness, etc. We're part of Aston Play, Project Play 2020, which obviously we're coming up on the end of 2020 here, so new initiatives are being born about that organization for 2024. But it's really a think tank of some of the most important brands in sports, from Nike to major baseball, to the Olympic organizations, to us as well, in really combating the issues of access to sport in our country and helping create access, whether it's from, you know, the cost to play, the location, or the lack of facilities. And then, we also work with Recreation Parks Associations to help value the impact that parks have on communities, everything from home values to crime to wellness to tourism. And so, we're in a lot of different things within our industry, but our focus is youth and amateur sports, not on stadiums, not on arenas. It's participative facilities, both for recreation, sports, entertainment, etc. So, I mentioned SFM, so I give you an idea of, obviously, I work mostly on our planning services, but give you an idea of the impact and the breadth of our network. Well, you can see here is a map of the SFM network, which currently is 21 venues that we're adding to every day of some of the most important and prominent event, sports, tourism facilities in the country. So, you can see some that you may be familiar with, like Myrtle Beach Sports Center or Rocky Top Sports World in Gatlinburg, Tennessee. Those facilities were planned, developed, opened, and are managed by our companies. We help those public entities make decisions to best help their communities. And then, we also work on private projects, like Cedar Point Sports Center, Apex Sports Events, where the private side is partnering with the public to create great projects that are sustainable, help wellness and social impacts in the community, as well as then economic impact and economic development. So, just to give you an idea of those. I'm gonna skip through quickly here, some of the examples. This is Myrtle Beach Sports Center. Just as you can see, it was about $12.5 million. We've generated a total of $120 million in economic impact since this facility was developed in 2015, and so you can see the incredible results we're seeing here. It's 43,000 new, almost 44,000 new room nights in that community from sports and events at that facility. So, just as an example of that, Rocky Top Sports World, that's now an indoor and outdoor facility. I won't highlight all the impact, but I will just highlight is what we see more and more in industry is really public and private partnership. In this case, it's really mostly a public partnership, but this is a county and city-owned facility located on school board land, to come together to create an event destination facility to increase tourism of the area and be an economic development driver. And so, we manage this facility, again, so that's the private partnership aspect, but a lot of different public communities coming in and helping to create a great asset for that community. I won't highlight too many others, but Hoover Met Complex in Hoover, Alabama, indoor and outdoor with a stadium, Rocky Mount Event Center in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, a hybrid event and sport destination that has more of convention capabilities, but just thinking about these facilities, not just as sports, sporting places, but also for community, civic, and other types of non-sports events as well. And then, Cedar Point Sports Center, just highlight that one, because all the ones I've shared so far in this specific section have been publicly developed and publicly owned. This is on the flip side. This is Cedar Point Sports Center in Sandusky, Ohio. It was opened this year, at the beginning of this year. And this is a privately-owned project that has significant public partnership and public funds behind it. It's a $42 million development, of which over 60% of the funding came from a combination of county, city, hotel-motel tax incentive, as well as a medical partnership for leased space within and naming rights for this facility. So, just another example of where we're seeing public-private partnership for, you know, these catalysts for both wellness, sport, recreation, and social impact in communities, as well as economic development. I'll skip this. Obviously, you all are familiar with IRMO, the location and the place we're talking about here. As far as SC Kings, obviously, Russell has shared about his organization. I think what's really important to point out is that this facility comes with both the ability to be driven by a proven business model and management system, but also benefit from, and the community ultimately benefit from engagement from SC Kings in providing sports and character development and leadership through their programs within this facility to continue to achieve the vision that Russell has had with that facility and have a place to do that, and to ultimately, you know, positively impact the quality of life of residents in the area. So, just a little bit more background on the industry we're talking about. Sports tourism is about a 19, almost $20 million industry from a youth sports tourism perspective. We're experiencing about 20% growth year over year. Now, the big question, I'm sure in all your minds, is how has COVID impacted this? And so, I'll focus there a little bit. Obviously, much like every other industry, right, every facility, we had 21 empty venues earlier this year. What we've seen since then, and what we've developed in our venues, is our COVID response and reopening plan and operating guidelines to operate safely, keep people safe, but continue to be able to host events and host sporting activity. And so, we are open in every venue at this point. We've hosted over 150 events since when things started to reopen, depending on the state, in March and April. We've had hundreds of thousands of visits to our facilities and 35 cases. And so, not that, you know, we, you know, have a crystal ball of where things headed, but what we have seen is that with the proper guidelines that are vetted from a legal and health perspective up to the governor's office in every state that we're operating in, with those guidelines, we can operate safely and keep people safe, and they're ready to play. We've seen and expect, based on bookings in our venues, that we expect this industry to pick up next year, especially where we left off and continue to grow. So, again, that's some anecdotal, some data evidence, but just from our experience and what we're seeing in management, people are ready to play, and we're doing that safely and look forward to continued growth in this industry. The only other piece of the industry that I'll talk through is, you know, obviously, that was a lot about, you know, how people are traveling and how people are spending and economic development. Those are the most fortunate people, right, who have the ability and have the funds to be able to do that. And so, what's really important to us and our mission, which is to positively impact the health and economic vitality of communities we serve, is to also create access, right? I talked about Aston Play 2020. SFM also has an access program where we utilize different ways in different communities, but we utilize things like, for example, sponsorship dollars to scholarship kids into who can't afford into programs. And so, another way we do that is partnering with organizations, whether it's recreation organizations or other nonprofits in communities, where we can create space and opportunities for kids, all the way through adults, really multi-generational access, to create access to those who can't necessarily afford these types of amenities. And so, that's really a focus for us. And the driver behind that, and I don't, I won't harp on this with you all, because I know you understand it being, you know, dedicated to recreation, but we know the physical and social benefits that sport and recreation have to kids, whether it's less likely to participate in high-risk behaviors, you know, more likely to go to college, more likely to earn more, more productive work, etc., etc., right? And it's an intergenerational cycle where more active kids are more likely to be active parents, who are more likely to have active kids, and so on. And so, that is the driver behind why we are so focused on access and community benefit within these facilities. And I'll just skip through these couple. So, then getting to this specific facility before we go into more questions. As I mentioned earlier, we've worked with Russell and Allison to understand their vision, to study the market, and understand both locally and regionally what the opportunity could be for sport and recreation. And what we have recommended, based on our process for forecasting and understanding the opportunities of, of which are all informed by real-world operations, based on our management, what we've achieved over our lifespan as a company, is a recommendation of about 120,000 square-foot indoor facility, a total of 8.8 acres. I won't read all of these stats, but included in the facility are both heavily court space, right? Court is the number-one largest area of this facility. I know we talked about things like basketball and volleyball. It's not just basketball and volleyball, right? We look at this and program it as an inventory of time. So, how can we partner with Silver Sneakers? How can we partner with the local community to create open event space, right? Where we can do things like basketball, volleyball, we can also do pickleball and cheer and dance and non-sports events, and hosting, you know, civic events and those types of things. And so, we're looking at this as a multifaceted, multi-programming opportunity with both in-house programs, also partnership programs with the local community. So, then diving in a little bit further, this is the site. It's on Broad River Road, right off that interchange there. We've identified this site based on analysis of some others, and have looked at this as a great opportunity for accessibility to the community for this type of recreation. So, you can see then, again, the overarching, this is now the floor plan of what was the rendering. You can see, you know, heavily court space with some other things within this. We've got some fitness space and tutoring-type space, all the support spaces you'd expect, right? Offices, restrooms, concessions, etc., as well as a medical tenant. That's a relationship that we believe we can develop within the industry, within the local community, to provide those types of assets and create a benefit to both community and the facility. I'll skip through here. This is a better breakdown of than some of the other spaces. So, that big court space is about 66,000 total square feet. We've got about 10,000 square feet of entertainment area, a smaller 2,000-square-foot sports performance area, and then 30,000 square feet of flex space within that model that I showed you. We also have several leased spaces to create partnership opportunities that is both guaranteeing, you know, and creating revenue for the facility, making it more sustainable, but also partnering for those things that we won't run ourselves. I'll skip through many of these things. You know, we've got eight and 16 basketball and volleyball courts, sports performance area, family entertainment. When I say family entertainment, that is, can be things like arcades, laser tag. What we're focused on is active recreation, where we create climbing spaces, ninja warrior obstacle course-type settings for things that you've likely seen on TV, to really create a fun factor to the facility, to give it more things for people to do when they visit, and to create more revenue and diversify the facility. So, we're really excited about the synergies of that within the sport and recreation spaces. We've got medical space as well. So, then wrapping up with some of the numbers then on what we forecasted for the facility, it's about, estimated about $25 million in startup construction costs. That includes the facility, that includes parking development, site development, all those things. Within that, it's about 509,000 projected annual visitors, and the cumulative economic impact is about, estimated to be about $51 million within the first five years. You can see that out to years 10 and 20. 11.9 million of that is on an annual basis, once we hit maturity. 20, almost 28,000 new room nights come to the market because of this facility. And so, we have a unique opportunity here to create something that is an economic development driver, as well as something that is a recreation asset, right, that we wouldn't have but for the ability to drive events in this way and create partnerships in the way that we do this. So, it's really multifaceted in how we're impacting the community. And so, just to wrap before I open up to questions, just in terms of where we are in the process, we've done our traditional feasibility analysis, and we're transitioning this project into the funding, finance, and strategic partnership phase. As Russell mentioned, we've had great interest and excitement from the county side, from the local community, and from other partners within the community. And so, now we're building that awareness, building that excitement to develop partnerships that can help make this project a reality. And so, I'll leave this with the final piece of, when we look at these facilities, what we strive to do from our perspective, from SFM in our management perspective, as well as I know this is important to Russell and Allison, is to collaborate at every level. You can see it right here. But we believe in collaboration and not competition, and so, we want to understand from your perspective, not just questions for us, but also, how could this fit into the plans that the Recreation Commission has within the community for access to recreation, those types of things? And how can we potentially work together to offer more than what you currently have the ability to offer, and to have this be as beneficial as possible to your pursuits as the Recreation Commission? So, I'll stop there, and Russell, please chime in if there's anything else you have that you want to add. Otherwise, I'll be happy to answer questions that you have, and thank you.
Allison, did you have anything?
No, out of respect for time, I just want to make sure we open up for questions, any details, they would like to have additional information provided.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. I'm just trying to look at something real quick on my map. So, that site that you're showing us that is in Richland County, or is it in Lexington County?
It is in Richland County.
Okay, because the border gets kind of wanky over there where it'll go in and out. So, what do you want from the recreation, like, what is the purpose for RCRC in your eyes for this presentation? What would you be looking for us to do?
As we've met with leadership, both Senate and the House, as well as leadership with the commission, we have been asked to make sure that we present this information to you. We are looking for financial partners. We've had some really excellent conversation with the local banks, and they are very, they approve our numbers with the ability to have a public-private partnership, to be able to have a financial partnership with the local government. And so, our next meeting is with Mr. Hayes, with the Budget Office with Richland County, but leadership asks us to also present it to you, the commissioners, to make sure that you had all the details about the project.
Perfect.
I think my biggest question is the location, and I guess, kind of like, why put it in one location as opposed to another? There's a soccer complex that just got opened up off of Monticello Road, and I think it's bringing a lot of economic development to that area, and I'm wondering if that might not be a better location for this facility. But you guys are doing research, so I'd be interested in hearing why one place as opposed to another, and if there's any other locations that are under consideration.
Allison, you want me to speak to that?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. So, we analyze sites that we knew to be available, and so, you know, if, Russell, please correct me, you know, this is the site that rose to the top that we believe has the best combination of accessibility, and what we're looking for in terms of size, cost, all those details, right? What I would say from our perspective is, we don't close the door on any conversation, right? And so, as we look for ways to partner, we would assess anything before land, if that is beneficial, we would look at that as part of the process. But again, we're looking at our bill, so there may be things to be had there.
And another reason, because of the hotels, shops, restaurants, and other amenities in the area, which are, if you're looking at things from a parent perspective, having everything within five minutes of the facility that you're visiting is very attractive. And the IRMO area with Harvard Boulevard and all the restaurants and hotels in that area was the most appealing, just from that standpoint, and the numbers backed it up once we did the, once we had the feasibility study done.
That's right.
Was there any consideration for making this an indoor/outdoor, like some of the other facilities that we've seen in the presentation?
Yeah, so from our perspective, we're balancing, obviously, the vision, financial constraints as well. And so, in order to effectively achieve what has been envisioned here, we really focused on the smaller spaces. The reality of outdoor is very difficult to create a sustainable model for that type of asset without some significant partnership. So, again, I would say that we are probably open to anything, but we've really focused on indoor vision and the opportunity to create something that works from the private side.
Do you charge admission for everyone coming in? How does that work?
Yeah, so it depends on the way that people are accessing, for what, right? There is not a door charge or a ticket charge for everyone to come in, but to participate in programs, right? Whether it's a rental, or a league, or a camp, or clinic, or private instruction, right? There's fees for that, unfair larceny value for those types of programs. The only time where there will be admission is when we're hosting a large-scale event, right? If we have a basketball tournament going on for three days over a weekend, there will likely be a, there will be a gate charge for that. But for regular programming, it's really just dependent on what folks are participating within the facility. There's not a membership requirement or anything like that. It's fee for, you know, whatever program or service that's happening in the facility.
Well, yeah, I think this is, I was, I had been down to the Myrtle Beach complex, and I've actually been to something up in Greenville or Spartanburg that was an upward complex that had soccer and a facility somewhat similar to this.
Yeah, we helped open that facility. We're very familiar.
Yeah, and it's very impressive, and, you know, I think this is something the company needs, however we get there. And I appreciate you guys making this presentation tonight.
All right, well, we really appreciate your time. If you have any questions in the future, or you have our information, please feel free to contact us.
All right, and likewise, if you have any other ideas, comments, or concerns, please reach out to us as well, and hope to hear from you all in the future.
All right.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye. All right. So, appreciate that. The next order of business tonight is Dr. Jerry Odom. Will make a presentation for the Greater Columbia Tennis Association. And just a quick background before we go there is that Dr. Odom called me and asked if the smart, you know, that they're very concerned about some of our tennis facilities, mainly Park Lane and Trenton Park. And consequently, we started talking about the best way for him to talk about their concerns. Is it better for them to show up in mass, in the masses, in, you know, in the open public forum, or is it better for them to go to? Or is it better for them to go to the county council and talk about their concerns? And I kind of talked to Lakita about this. I even went and spoke to Mr. Leonardo Brown, the county administrator, about the funding aspect of getting our facilities upgraded because of our budgetary issues that we're having. So I think that this is the beginning and I'll probably ask for Lakita to step in some way, somewhere in this presentation, maybe to talk about Park Lane in the current facility. But Dr. Odom, thank you for being here and we look forward to hearing from you. Hello?
Can you hear me, Rob?
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
All right, I'd like to thank the chair as well as the board members for letting us make a presentation about facilities. My name again is Jerry Odom. My wife and I are both avid tennis players and Richland County taxpayers. I really come to you tonight as Chair of the Columbia Tennis Association Facilities Committee, representing the thousands of players who play league tennis in the Midlands and who pay fees to play at Richland County and City of Columbia tennis facilities. I'm also a member of the USTA South Carolina Board and Chair, a Tennis Advocacy Task Force. And I'd like to come back to that in just a moment. First thing I'd like for you to know is that even in these challenging times, tennis is a safe and healthy sport. It's played outdoors, players are practicing self-distancing, safe distancing. They're using hand sanitizer on changeovers and taking all precautions to stay safe. Not only is tennis a safe sport, it is a sport that can be played and enjoyed by all ages from five to 85. Many families play tennis together. As the Columbia Tennis Association Facilities Chair, I initiated what I term the Court Reporter System. I would identify one or more players on a team that used a facility as their home base. And I would ask that they report to me any problems with courts at that facility. I would also speak at our annual captains meeting that includes captains for all teams in all leagues for the entire year, requesting that captains or any of their players contact me with concerns about court conditions. I would then work with RCRC or City of Columbia staff to do what we could to correct the condition. And let me just give a quick shout out to Matt Parker on Lakita's staff, who's been a real delight to work with. What I would like for you to know tonight is that if all of the Richland County Recreation Commission facilities, I receive more complaints about Park Lane than any other. Primary, primarily about cracks in the courts, the top surface completely worn away and the extremely poor lighting. People do not want to play at Park Lane at night because of this poor lighting situations. Net court, net courts, nets on the courts were sometimes an issue. I've also received numerous complaints and concerns about the Trenton Road facility, as well as the St. Andrews facility. Court reporters finally gave up giving me reports on Kaufman Road. At one time, that was an excellent tennis facility, but now it is almost beyond repair. I think we all should consider Park Lane as the flagship facility for RCRC and it dearly needs much attention. I sincerely hope you will consider funding improvements there. The courts need resurfacing and the lighting situation needs immediate attention. Let me briefly turn to my chairmanship of the USTA South Carolina Tennis Advocacy Task Force. I, along with my Vice Chair Kathy Sill and our Staff Liaison Cheryl McAllister, have taken it upon ourselves to visit some other facilities such as courts in Lexington County, Camden, Sumter, Florence and Newbury. These are all primary facilities in the Midlands. And ladies and gentlemen, just have to tell you, they put our facilities to shame. It is embarrassing to compare what we have and what we play on to what these different cities have. You know, we're the capital city of the state, we're the most populous city in the state and we need facilities that we can be proud of. In addition, this has an economic impact. There is no way that we can compete with these locations for tournaments, which are very popular. Their tournaments primarily held on the weekends. That means people staying in motels, eating in restaurants, shopping and doing every other things in the area. And we are losing out because of inadequate and poor facilities. So we're losing hard dollars to these other locales in the Midlands. In closing, I am simply asking you to pay attention to your tennis facilities and work for their improvement. Tennis courts need constant attention. There should be an amount set aside annually in your budget for court maintenance and upkeep. This should be done in a strategic way so that all of your courts are not neglected. I can assure you that there are thousands of tennis players in the Midlands who are willing to work with you and for you to accomplish that goal. Mr. Chair, I'd like to now turn this presentation over to another avid tennis player, much better than I am, is Pamela Banks. And after Pamela finishes, we'll be happy to address any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. My name is Pamela Banks. Once again, I'm the Manager of Community Engagement. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, for the United States Tennis Association of South Carolina. And one of my main duties is to grow the sport amongst youth within Richland County schools. I work closely with PE teachers and after-school program providers. And once the children get an introduction to tennis, I bridge them into community programs closest to their neighborhoods. With Richland County's tennis facilities lacking tennis programming, it presents a lost opportunity. Like Jerry said, I am an avid tennis player. I started league play on Richland County's courts over 15 years ago. That's where I built strong personal and professional relationships. There was a host of organized group and individual activity and tournaments at several locations. He's included Park Lane, Trenton Park, Kaufman Road, North Springs Park and Polo, as well as St. Andrews Park. Several years ago, Richland County provided a great service for its taxpayers and maintained revenue-building opportunity. On any given day or evening, you could just drive by the parks and see almost every court occupied. Now during the pandemic we're, we're facing right now, USTA South Carolina, whom I'm affiliated with, and the Columbia Tennis Association, offered introductory programming for 300 new adult players and also 100 youth players. These youth and adults make up our very own, very diverse population in Richland County. That's what makes us so unique. These players are ready to form teams, to compete. They need a staff facility with safe courts and good lighting, along with additional instruction. Currently with bare-bones staffing and inadequate accommodations, this is another missed opportunity. I'm a parent with a daughter who plays recreational and high school tennis. To keep her involved, I trek to Lexington County or private clubs. For nearly five years, this has become the norm when it comes to recreational play or tournament options. Surely, parents would love to patronize their local facility. This is a missed opportunity in Richland County. I'm a certified tennis teaching professional. I have several pupils who pass by local facilities to train in a private neighborhood and sometimes they drive up to 30 miles to do so. It would be much more convenient for many of them to play much closer to their residence. But there is some good news. USTA South Carolina has helped to train five new instructors who are looking for part-time employment or short-term program placement. In January 2021, we are partnering with Richland County Parks and Rec to host a Martin Luther King Jr. Tennis Day of Service at three different locations. We're excited about this. Trenton Park, Polo Road and North Springs Park. We hope to engage local kids in on-court activities to get them interested in tennis. Like Jerry mentioned, Columbia is centrally located with enough courts and enough hotels. We should be holding tournaments and one-day events. Just think about hosting a pro exhibition at one of these facilities. Imagine the tourism and the economic impact that could yield. But instead, these events are held in other cities. I believe we're missing this opportunity. And lastly, tennis has maintained its reputation as a lifelong sport embraced by families. Whether you're five or 85, it can be a form of wellness and everyone will stay fit for a lifetime. Studies show that tennis players' life expectancy is seven years more. Tennis is by far very safe and by nature, everyone is already socially distanced. The USTA South Carolina, as well as the Columbia Tennis Association, is working really hard to make sure we ask that our players forego handshakes and high fives just so they don't have a lot of contact. But please, please consider how to keep Richland County residents safely playing tennis and fully enjoying each facility. Thanks a lot for your, your attention this evening.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation. I think the question I would have is how much would it cost to fix up a facility like Park Lane? And when you mentioned the yearly upkeep and stuff like that, how much would it be for the yearly upkeep of a facility like Park Lane? I'm just curious if y'all, if you guys had that information as part of your presentation.
I think Lakita's.
Who's speaking?
It's Coach B. I'm sorry.
Hey, Coach, you sounded like 10 years younger. I'm like, where's this young man at? Thank you, sir.
I've been losing weight. I'm feeling good.
Changed your voice. I do, thank you, sir. I do have Matthew Christman, who is our Recreation Superintendent over Athletics. And he is on this call and has been working closely with Matthew Parker, our Athletic Supervisor. When it comes to looking at our facilities, I first, of course, would like to thank Mr. Odom as well as Ms. Banks for their presentation this evening. Well, we do recognize that we have some work to do. And it is tied directly to the capital improvement cost for these facilities to get them up to the safe level that we would like them and where would they need to be at? But Matthew, if you can share some of the things that we've looked at as it relates to the total cost of Park Lane and what that includes, as well as the grant that we have submitted through the United States Tennis Association?
Thank you, Lakita. Yes, so we have looked at Park Lane and to redo the 12 courts that are there, it's $600,000. The other issue that comes into play is that there is asbestos in the material that is at Park Lane. So we've went with a company that can basically encapsulate the asbestos, so we don't have to remove it. Because the abatement process, you're talking another $300,000 one company gave us. Another company gave us 1.2 million for the abatement process. We are working with a company to do light improvements without the capital improvement. We're looking to see if we can budget for it through, excuse me, lowering, because we're looking at doing LED lights out there. And with the savings from the light bill, we were trying to see if we could put that in. And I'm waiting back on those numbers from the company. The company's name is Bottom Line Systems. So we are, we are, we understand the need for the improvements and we're just trying to figure out the best way since Park Lane is $600,000. And then like Lakita said, that we are looking and working with USTA. They put all of their grants on hold, so we're hoping in, in January that they will pick that back up. It's a 50-50 match. So if it's 600,000, we would have to come up with 300,000 and then they would match to 300,000. So yes, we are looking at improving our facilities.
Thank you, Matthew. And members of the board, you have received the request from Cornelia to identify the times and dates for us to get together, possibly in January, so that we can discuss in full detail our capital improvement plan, the budget process that has to align with that and future development for facilities as a commission. So I am looking forward to that dialogue and hoping out of that dialogue, we can identify those strategies, not only for prioritizing our projects, but also for funding.
Couple of questions. Dr. Odom, were you finished or did you say you were going to come back on after Pam was speaking?
No, Mr. Chair, I, all I am prepared to do is answer questions. And I think the questions about Park Lane have been suitably answered. The only thing that I would ask is, do we have a timeline for improvements at Park Lane? And are we also looking at Trenton Road Park and St. Andrews Park, which are the three main facilities for league play?
So I want to let Lakita speak real quick, but let me just kind of reiterate that we did meet with Mr. Leonardo Brown, the city or the county administrator, to let him know that we felt like that the tennis facilities were becoming dangerous. And if they, they can't be used, that it would cause more, you know, bigger issues with safety and security of the area and that we felt like it was very, very important for us to get them fixed up. On top of the fact that even on the presentation that was done prior to this, and what you all mentioned is that the dollars that could be generated by holding tennis tournaments, you know, having a famous tennis player come and do a, do lessons or, you know, whatever they would come and do to help create excitement in the sport is so important. And as Lakita, I think, can reiterate, you know, we, we spoke to Mr. Brown and I think we emphasized the issues of Trenton Road and Park Lane. Maybe not St. Andrews as much, which we need to do, but we need help in, in helping create, getting more money into our budget from the county as well. But, I mean, I think Matt's presentation is great that, listen, if we can get $300,000 from several, the council, you know, from the council to help us and get the USTA match, I think that would be huge to get things done. I would say that, you know, I'd lead, I'd speak to Lakita on a time, timing of this, but, you know, obviously we want to do it as fast as we can, but unfortunately, the situation we're in right now with the budget, it's not as easy as it, as us just talking about it.
Yes, so you are correct. What we are attempting to do is provide a prioritization list for all of the tennis facilities that will include the things that were assessed from a safety and security standpoint and put dollar amounts to those. And then from there, we can identify where those funding sources can possibly come from. But it is unfortunate, one of the first things when I came here, of course, I hear people speak about the $50 million bond. But that bond was to do a lot of new facilities and those funds were not put into upgrading and maintaining the other facilities that are remaining. So Mr. Odom, yes, sir, we do recognize the urgency. And we are starting with Park Lane and the other three are on our radar and will be included and seek public and private funding to correct these issues.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could just ask the Recreation Commission's advice, I mean, I've got people that are more than happy to go to county council. Is that something that we, as all of the tennis players who play in the county, need to do? Should we go to county council and, and lobby for you to get more money? If we need to do that, I think we have a lot of people who are willing to do that. And I, in fact, wanted to let you know that I did that once before, and I was really told that we might have to go to the Richland County Legislative delegation and lobby them. But they told me that they gave the Richland County Recreation Commission the money, and the money came through county council. And so it almost seemed to me, and I may be harsh here, but people were pointing fingers in different directions, and we weren't being given really good advice on how do we, as a tennis community, help this community improve its facilities?
Mr. Odom, that was powerful. You started here with us as the commission. We do recognize that we are responsible for the operations and management of all the facilities with the funding that we receive. But the funding that we do receive, we don't receive any funding directly from the state unless it is through a grant process. That is the only funding that we receive through the state since I've been here, from what I can gather. And second, the funding that we receive from the county is specific to operating, not for building and not for improvements. So that's where, sir, I'm trying to work with the county administrator to identify how. And yes, sir, these individuals that are elected, they are welcoming your voice as well. So by no means what we say as a commission, I can't speak for the board, but the same way that you've come to this appointed body, I don't see where we would discourage you from going to the elected body as well in knowing that we do support tennis in our community, and we just need to find out the best way to address these issues.
Yeah, and to reemphasize exactly what Lakita said, we actually asked Mr. Brown at the county about the best way to go about it for your group and others. And he said, listen, you have a right as a citizen, you know, as citizens, to voice your opinions and what you want, and I would highly recommend doing that. As far as the legislative delegation, we do have like five mills that goes towards our budget, but not, as Ms. Watson said, towards our improvements and maintaining. So, you know, I think the individual county council members are good people to speak with also because they do have funding that at certain times that they can help out with also. But I definitely think going to a council meeting would be very helpful for you all.
Thank you. We're happy to answer any other questions, Mr. Chair.
All right. Steve or Donzetta, Thomas, Lisa, anything? All right.
It's a good presentation, and, you know, I think we all want to see tennis grow and be taken care of.
Thank you very much.
And hopefully, we can identify some private funding as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Odom. Really appreciate it and look forward to hearing how, you know, looking forward to working on this process together as time goes on, hopefully at a lot quicker pace than it has been.
I hope so as well.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. We'll get into our financial report with Brandy, who is going to present to the board.
Meeting commissioners, in the interest of time, I will provide a brief update on our finances November for both the Enterprise and General Fund. But before I begin, I want to make sure, does everybody see my screen? Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So again, we are seeing similar trends in our revenues and expenses for both the General Fund and the Enterprise Fund that I've shared with you in previous meetings. Our overall revenues for the General Fund has decreased approximately 21% through November. And as I've stated in previous meetings, the primary driver of that decrease is the decrease in our overall program revenue. Our general fund expenses are continuing to be, continuing to decrease when compared to last year. Our overall decrease in our general fund expenses are approximately 16%. The major driver of those decreases relate to certain operating expenses as well as program and property management expenses. I'll stop there. Are there any questions before I go to the Enterprise Fund? If not, for our Enterprise Fund, we are continuing to see increased revenue when compared to last year. Our increased revenue for our Enterprise Fund is approximately 50% above what our Enterprise Fund revenues were for last year. Our overall expenses for our Enterprise Fund has increased approximately 16%. And the major driver of that increase is related to certain operating expenses related to running our golf course, which includes certain pro shop food and beverage expenses. Our payroll expenses are flat when compared to last year, as well as our repairs and maintenance expenses. Are there any questions on any of that that I haven't shared so far? And again, in the interest of time, again, I just wanted to provide you a brief update of where we are.
All right, Brandy, thank you very much. Good news about the Enterprise Fund. Do you know when the golf carts are supposed to get there?
Matt is still working with the leasing company to put that order in for our golf carts. So that order has not been completed as of yet, but we're hoping to get all of that completed and the golf carts in in January.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're moving into some unfinished business where we.
Start, Chair. There is a discussion item for action for a finance committee appointment. We spoke previously about establishing a small group to look at the financial forecast as well as our capital improvement budget with yourself, as well as one other board member that was not currently an officer, an officer, excuse me. So that is the item that we're requesting you make that appointment so that we can schedule that finance meeting in January to start looking at some of the forecasting issues that we may be facing.
Okay, so that really gives me a choice between Steven and Lisa. Is that correct?
No, Thomas and Lisa, and I nominate Thomas.
I nominate Thomas as well because Lisa's, she's been very busy.
I've been busy also.
I don't know, looking at that beard, don't look like you've been shaving.
So, sir, you do have a motion on the table. You do need a second in order to make that appointment.
I'd like to make a motion for Thomas to join the finance committee.
Your first motion was actually made by Commissioner Cotton, so you need a second outside of yourself, sir.
So we need a second from Donzetta or Steven?
Yes.
A second.
Good job, Donzetta.
So now, sir, you can call for the vote through Cornelia.
Come on, Corn.
Hey, Lapine.
Yes.
Are you knocking on the wall?
I'm knocking.
Lapine?
Yes, ma'am.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Coach V?
Yes.
Clark? Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved unanimously that the finance committee will consist of Commissioner Lapine and Commissioner Clark.
Perfect.
Yes, sir, it would include myself along with Tamika and Jamie, I mean, Tamika and Brandy from the staff side.
I was just curious if Brandy would make the cut on that one.
You do have your unfinished business. You have the two policies, the dress code and personal appearance policy for your action. You received. Holiday pay and updates policy was for your review from your previous meeting and requested action. Minimal changes have been made through Mr. Dickey to only include things that are moving words from must to shall, but the intent nor the content neither have changed. So we stand ready for a motion if the board does not have any questions regarding the policies that have been presented.
Well, I just, I'm fine with it, but Donzetta had some questions, and I think, I don't know if they've been answered from last time. So I assume I'll ask her real quick, before we move on to the next item, if she's okay with everything.
Dress code policy is up first.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the dress code impersonal parents policy?
Can I ask a question about it? So under item J, where it says employees choosing to be non-compliant, you know, may, well, can be disciplined up to termination. How are you guys planning to determine non-compliance? Like, does there have to be some kind of warning issued? And I mean, how is that going to work?
It will go through the consistent discipline policy, meaning our consistent discipline starts with verbal and from verbal to written suspension up to termination. Can we mute? I have someone in the back. Thank you. The violation would be if there is something that is done arbitrary to the policy, of course. So if an employee consistently comes in and are wearing spandex, every time you wear that spandex, it worked towards that consistent discipline documentation and thus.
Okay, that sounds good to me. And I remember one time seeing that part of the policy, but I guess that's, the disciplinary is a separate policy thing from this, and it just kind of refers, can, I guess, relate back to all the other policies. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. The discipline policy, every policy refers back to that as it relates to the visual case-by-case basis of that infraction.
Perfect, thank you.
Lakita, I got a question. With the change of the brand, are we just responsible for supplying shirts? And how many shirts are each employee receiving?
Based on our budget, we did receive a brand and budget, but we are currently cutting back some of that, as you recall, sir, because we had that cut previously. So what we have done, we have identified a step-in process where employees have been receiving shirts based off of where they're currently working and how much visibility they have with the public. But then we are also establishing a process by which employees, after they receive the amount that we are going to give them, where they can still move forward with getting additional items from us that weren't included in the budget, but they can pay out of pocket.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, if there are any more questions, Chairman Lapine, we are requesting an approval of the dress code policy.
Yeah, I'm looking for somebody to make a motion to approve that.
I make a motion that we approve the dress code policy as written back then.
Oh, did I hear a second?
Yes, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lindsey? Unmute, Ms. Lindsey.
It keeps popping up, yes.
Okay, thank you. Coach V?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved unanimously.
Yes, sir, and the second policy, thank you, members of the board, the second policy for your consideration. And we open the floor for any questions. We have our human resources director and our employment attorney on the call. And that second policy for your requested action tonight is the holiday pay.
On the holiday pay, the observed holidays, not only concerned about some of those holidays, are they, how do they correspond like with the school calendar? Because I don't know that the schools celebrate President State, so if it's a day when the schools are out, we should be able to offer daycare, you know, or childcare or something like that. So that's my only concern.
Yes, ma'am, we do, unfortunately, but fortunately, we have three schools that we have to work with. So we literally go through their calendar as we looked at this. And as we shared on our previous call, this is bound to the board for your action. So any recommendations for approval with any changes are for you.
I have a question. I'm sorry, Lisa, you still going?
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
My question was number eight. The purpose of the policy of reserve the state of South Carolina holidays and additional holidays established by the executive director. Holiday pay is available to regular full-time employees. My question is, I looked up the South Carolina state holidays.
Yes, ma'am.
Good Friday is not on there, and that was the same question I had the last, in November.
Yes.
How do you, how do you, how can you include Good Friday when it's not a state or federal holiday?
If we look back at that wording that you shared with us, I'm sorry, ma'am, forgive me, I didn't realize you were still speaking. As we look back at that purpose of the policy, where we have, again, starting with A, the purpose of this policy is to observe the state of South Carolina declared holidays and additional holidays established by the executive director. I did a simple poll of my employees, asked for their input. Good Friday came out of that poll. As I shared with you all previously, this list is still up for the approval of the board. So if that additional holiday that was identified is not something that the board supports, by all means, it can be removed and voted upon.
Well, I think we need to remove it because according to the South Carolina state, state and federal holidays, it stated Good Friday doesn't exist.
I would disagree with you, Donzetta. I think that in the functional lives of our employees, Good Friday is a highly observed holiday, and I think we need to recognize it as such.
You're talking about paid leave. I think you need to go to South Carolina law and look at it and show the official by the governor, the masters of the legal holidays for state and federal. Now.
I just think that the majority of South Carolinians would agree that.
If they want to take annual leave, they can take annual leave or sick leave for Good Friday. It's not that they don't, that they have to come to work because they can take leave, but it's not a paid holiday, and you need to look up the policy before we vote on it.
That's the question before it's done, Zed, is are we going to make it our policy? And I'm just saying that I think that it should be our policy to respect our employees' personal and religious beliefs.
I believe in Good Friday also, but it's not a state or federal holiday. And that's what I'm saying, we're not going by the law. So, I mean, you can vote for, I mean, I agree with the, if they want to take leave on the Friday, they have to take annual leave or sick leave. That's policy, Stephen. I don't know if you.
Oh, no, that is the policy. I'm just saying, that's what we're talking about. Dickey, what are you trying to say, Dickey?
I'll just go with, I think Commissioner Lindsey's concern is whether or not, you know, the agency itself can, and I guess establish a holiday that isn't already in line with state and federal holidays. If that is Commissioner Lindsey's concern, if I recited it correctly, you know, I think what you can do here, if the majority of the board, you know, is in favor of the said holiday, of the added holiday, you know, a motion can be made that is established, subject to its compliance or subject to it being, you know, something that can be done in accordance with state and federal law. And if not, it's easily severable provision in the policy, and if it is, you know, it can be established. I don't know, Mayor Bob might have some opinion on it, but that would be my thought.
Mayor Bob?
I would agree with Joseph. I think, you know, that would be the way to happen.
Okay, I didn't hear you too well.
I couldn't hear you either. Are you looking up the law?
I think you said you agree with Joseph, but I'm not sure what you said. That's. That's what you.
I agree with Joseph. Did you hear me?
No, not great. So I think that Lisa made a really good comment, Lakita, that if the schools are out, like you're talking about some of these presidents holidays and whatnot, I would think it'd be really a big bonus for us to have the facilities open during some of those holidays.
That's certain, that's why holiday pay is included in here. So it doesn't say that we're completely closed. It just identifies how individuals are compensated during that holiday.
Got you. So in other words, if you deem to have Polo Road, the indoor facility there, the basketball courts or the community center open for a basketball tournament, then you'll have no problem staffing our facilities for those holidays.
No, sir. No problem at all.
Lisa, is that kind of what you were talking?
You're getting mixed up. It's a difference between a holiday, a paid holiday, and an annual leave day. Good Friday is a day you can take off, but you have to take annual leave or sick leave and not a paid holiday. You need to look up the South Carolina code.
Yeah, no, that was a, that was a different, um, point I was making regarding, um, making sure the facilities were open. But I will say, I do agree with you, Donzetta, that I don't, that I think our observed holidays should go along with either the state or the county, what the county or the state recognizes. I mean, I just think it's cleaner to do it that way. Um, that's just my opinion, though.
Yeah, we should follow suit with the county.
I have a copy of it. But it's online.
Yeah, we should follow suit with the county, but I have a question about, and as a county employee, we get the day before Christmas, Christmas Day, but then we have here the day after Christmas, which is Saturday, so.
This year falls on Saturday, but you know, we usually open on Saturdays. We're Parks and Recreation.
Yeah.
So that's why it's listed as a holiday, because that means we're closed.
For that Saturday?
Yes, sir, but we would usually be open on a Saturday.
So the question here.
We need clarification.
The question.
I mean, I wouldn't vote. Uh-huh, I, I wouldn't vote unless you, you got to take Good Friday out.
But is that, what, what does the county say?
It's online.
That's a regular word.
In federal, they have a list of all the state.
And the board has the prerogative to approve this policy with the rule of Good Friday, if that's your prerogative.
Yes. I mean, that's what I agree to, I don't know about Krista.
Okay, so let me, oh, I was gonna make a motion. If you're ready.
I was gonna say to get somebody to make a motion, sorry.
Okay, so the motion that I would make is that we approve Policy 105 Holiday Pay, um, as long as the holidays are in accordance with what the county recognizes as holidays.
Madam Commissioner.
Not a county holiday.
I think it'll be a little easier because we're dealing with county, and then we're also dealing with school holidays, and we're dealing with state holidays. If you could look at this list and approve the policy with the removal of the observed holiday that you don't support, which would be that Good Friday, it would just make it a little easier on staff going to.
Okay, okay. Um.
But I make a motion to remove Good Friday and approve the policy.
Well, but is President's Day a, a state holiday or is that a federal holiday?
It is.
It's not a.
It's, it's, it's. They have a George Washington Birthday President Day. It's shown on the state as President's Day.
Okay, so that is a state holiday?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, well.
It's not a county holiday.
Okay. All right, so it, so the, I guess the motion, the only date in question would be Good Friday, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I second that motion.
We need a, we need a new motion, we need you to request your motion.
Well, no, Thomas made, Commissioner Clark made a motion.
He really made it to remove Good Friday.
With the exception of Good Friday.
Right.
My apologies.
Lisa seconded it.
Okay. The motion was made by Commissioner Clark to approve the Policy 105 with removal of Good Friday and seconded by Ms. Cotton. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, roll call.
Oh, I would like to ask a discussion. Can I open it up for discussion real quick?
Okay.
Donzetta, what did you say, Good Friday? You, you said that we have to follow the state mandate? Is that what you're telling me?
We should be governing ourselves by the county.
Legal holidays are New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Birthday,
I know, I don't care about that.
Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year.
Why do we have to follow the state?
We should be governed by the county. We should be governed by the county.
By the governor.
From a legal perspective, the only thing you have to do.
Official holidays.
Hold on, everybody's talking, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Joseph speak real quick.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Tom, from a legal perspective, the only thing, you know, the agency requires, you know, as far as the state holiday schedules is slated, you have to follow the days that are listed. You can't just, you can't say, all right, on Independence Day, we're gonna make people work, because that's a state mandated holiday. Uh, so as long as you're following that, you know, I, I would believe, believe that the agency would be fine. Uh, you just couldn't delete anything.
Got you. Okay. That, that was my question. Couldn't you go ahead and take a vote, or if anybody else wants to say something, they can.
Any more discussion before I do roll call?
Yes, not to speak out of turn, and I guess this would be for Mayor Bob or for Mr. Dickey. What I would like to request for myself and in any future executive director is to remove the wording and additional holidays established by the executive director so that there is not, there is not that idea, because this is a, a policy that I just reviewed, I did not add that statement to it. But you, I would recommend that the board remove it so that no executive director would find themselves in that situation in adding a holiday because of what the policy states.
I, I would agree with that, I can make a new motion. Okay, so our new motion, our new motion would be that we approve Policy 105 Holiday Pay with the deletion of in paragraph, section one, subsection A, and additional holidays established by the executive director, and then paragraph three, observed holidays, with the removal of Good Friday.
I second.
Okay. Roll call. Lapine?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Coach V? Coach V?
Abstain.
Clark?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And the found policies for review and discussion at next meeting, which will be the leave policy, and it will be replacing Policies 15, 45, 133, 145, and 176. And it will go on the January for Action. And that concludes my presentation for new business, and I have no additional information, but I would like to say to all the staff that are on the call, panelists and employees, I'm wishing you nothing but the merest and safest Christmas possible in these hard times. You have been a blessing over these last past almost three years, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful 2021.
And you.
That was very nice, and I will second that. All right.
So now, sir, we are prep, preparing for the executive session. As you all recall, we do have a grievance hearing that will start off the executive session. At this time, I ask that everyone go on mute while Jamie prepares to move us into that next session. And, Mr. Chair, you can move us into closed session.
Okay, just one thing, just to tell the commissioners here that we do have the leave policy in our package, so make sure you read it for next week or next month. If you have any questions, make sure that we're, you can get those to Lakita or whomever prior to that time. Anyway, I'd like to move us into executive session.
I make a motion that we move into exec.
A second.
Lapine?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Coach V? Coach V?
Abstain.
Or executive session? Okay, Clark?
Yes, you're in the dock.
Yeah, well, I gotta go do something with the timer, I'm sorry. You got it? Okay.
I'm in the R2.
Or Cotton?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved to move into executive session for a grievance hearing and also a personnel matter. Thank you.